Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, December 17. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Leaks May?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Here, thank you. I would move for unanimous consent to excuse Councilman Martin's absence.
Support.
All right, thank you. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
All right. Any discussion on the agenda? Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Potem Polika?
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Moving on now to our first presentation, which is our fiscal year ended June 30, 2017, financial statement presentation. Good evening. Welcome back.
Thank you. For those of you that don't know, I'm Aaron Stevens from Stevens, Greenwich and Tucker. Tonight I passed out a presentation handout where we pulled excerpts out of the bound reports, put them into the presentation handout, and allows me to highlight some things, make some notes. I've got a PowerPoint presentation to go along with that, but PowerPoint presentation really is limited to the charts and graphs and a couple of paragraphs out of the independent auditor's report. A couple of general comments. Our thanks to Cheryl Candice, April, and the rest of the city staff for their courtesy cooperation and assistance. We know we're a disruption to the normal schedule, and we appreciate all the help that we get while we're here. What I plan to do is hit what I think are the highlights, but if you have questions, feel free to stop me at any time, and we can go through those. So I always like to remind everyone that the purpose of an audit is to express opinions on the financial statements. The purpose of an audit is not to detect fraud or give you an opinion on your internal controls. Fraud detection, deterrence, and prevention, as well as sound internal controls, are management's responsibility. Now, if we found fraud, if we have recommendations on how to improve your internal controls, we will certainly share that with you, and we would put that in writing, but that's a byproduct of the audit itself. So Pages 1, Roman numeral 1 through 3 make up the independent auditor's report. These are Pages 1 through 3 of your presentation handout as well. And management is also responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements, and that does include the internal controls over the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. As I said earlier, our responsibility is to express opinions on the financial statements, and that would be based on our audit. And so we've expressed what we refer to as unmodified or clean opinions on the financial statements for the city of Ferndale, where it states in our opinion, "The financial statements referred to above present fairly in all mature respects." That is the important phrase there. That is the unmodified opinion, and that is the highest level of assurance that we can provide for a set of financial statements. That's what you want to see as a council.
Indeed.
The government-wide financial statements are prepared on the full accrual basis of accounting. They primarily have a long-term perspective, and they're prepared once a year for the audit report. So I have a couple of key performance indicators here that I like to look at. We start with the statement of net position, and this is presented on Page 4 of your handout. And the statement of net position is a snapshot as of June 30, 2018. And we like to look at the current ratio, or I like to look at the current ratio, and that would be your current assets divided by your current liabilities. So you can cover your current obligations almost four times over as of June 30, 2018. At June 30, 2017, the governmental activities had a current ratio of 3.9, so pretty consistent from last year to this year. I also like to look at not only total net position, but the unrestricted portion of your net position. And as you can see, your total net position was about $6 million. The unrestricted portion is negative. It's negative about $20 million due to the requirement to recognize the net OPEB liability as of June 30, 2018. So there's a new accounting standard that had to be implemented, and the net OPEB liability, which is your retiree healthcare, is recognized on your full accrual statements, which would include the statement of net position here. For the business type activities, they had a current ratio at June 30, 2018 of 4.6. It was 4.1 in 2017, so again, fairly consistent from last year to this year. Total net position for your business type activities were about $28 million. The unrestricted portion of that is 8.9 million. There is a decrease of about $1 million in the unrestricted net position here, again, due to the recognition of that net OPEB liability. It's been allocated between governmental activities and business type activities. And by the way, I should have said this earlier, but the business type activities would include your water and sewer, as well as your parking funds. A more familiar presentation for you, the governmental funds financial statements are prepared on the modified accrual basis of accounting, which means they have a current financial resources focus. The fund financial statements, as I said, more familiar, and I've included some excerpts in your handouts. Page 5 of the handout presents the governmental funds balance sheet. This is also a snapshot as of June 30, 2018. And I didn't include the statements in the slideshow because they'd be too small to see, anyway. But I like to focus on the general fund out of the governmental funds, and the total fund balance in the general fund as of June 30, 2018 was approximately $6.9 million. The unrestricted fund balance was approximately $5.8 million. So out of the $6.9 million, you've got some portions that are earmarked for specific purposes or restricted, and so what you've got available for future use is $5.8 million. That represents approximately 28% of your annual expenditures and other financing uses. At June 30, 2017, you're at about 30%. So again, fairly consistent, a little bit of a drop, but 28% is still very healthy. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends maintaining a minimum fund balance in your general fund equal to two months' worth of normal operations, and two out of 12 months is about 17%, and you're at 28. So excellent shape there. The bar graph that you see on the screen here is a five-year trend, and as you can see, you've added to your fund balance where revenues have exceeded expenditures for the past four out of five years. So the only year in that graph that expenditures exceeded revenues and you used a little bit of fund balance was into 2014. So for June 30, 2018, the total general fund revenue was $19.4 million. It was about 1% higher than the previous year. Total general fund expenditures were $20.5 million. It was about 8% higher than the previous year. But after all of the other financing sources and uses were taken into consideration, there was actually no change in total fund balance from 2017 to 2018. We have a pie chart here that shows you the composition of your general fund revenues. Largest source of revenue were property taxes at 48%. They were 52% in the previous year. And then intergovernmental revenue, which would be your sales tax, that was at 18%, and that was 18% in 2017 as well. So fairly consistent there. We did see a little bit of a shift from property taxes to other financing sources because of the installment purchase agreement. So it has to add up to 100% yet an installment purchase agreement of $600,000, so we did see a little bit of a shift in the pie chart. On the expenditure side, composition of your expenditures, public safety at 59%. It was 59% in 2017 as well. General government at 20%. That was at 23% in 2017. So again, fairly consistent from year to year on that, on the composition. Then we have a five-year trend of the unrestricted fund balances as a percentage of expenditures, and as you can see, you've ranged from 25% to 30% over the past five years, so been healthy for a long time. And then the next line graph, this is in terms of dollars as opposed to percentages. The blue line on the top is the actual fund balance, and then the lower line is the 17% of the GFOA recommended minimum there. The proprietary funds are presented on the same information, or present the same information as the business type activities on the government-wide financial statements, but in more detail. It's broken into funds. You've got the water and sewer fund. You've got the auto parking fund, and it's in a slightly different format, but it is the same information because it's still full accrual for the proprietary funds. So here, I'm going to focus on the water and sewer fund, and for the water and sewer fund, as of June 30, 2018, you had a current ratio of 4.1, so you can cover your obligations four times over with your current financial resources. Total net position at June 30 was $24.5 million. Operating revenues, $10 million. Operating expenses, 9.4. So while you can see here in 2018, the revenues did exceed your expenses, the net position, total net position actually decreased, and that's because of that restatement for the OPEB liability. When you break the total net position down into the components of invested in capital and unrestricted, you can see a large portion of your total net position is invested in capital. You can't spend the water and sewer systems, so that isn't available for future use. But what is available is that unrestricted portion, and it's about $7.5 million as of June 30, 2018. And we have a similar line graph here comparing the last five years of the unrestricted net position to expenses. I look at operating expenses less the depreciation because it's not, depreciation is not a cash expense, so we factor that out, and you can see the trend. Again, fairly consistent with the previous year. It did drop a little bit from 2017 to 2018, but still in a sound financial position for the water and sewer fund as well. We did issue a report on internal control. It's included in not only your presentation handout, but also in the bound report. In the bound report, it's Pages 70 through 72. We had a couple of comments for your consideration. Wasn't going to go into those in detail tonight, but we've discussed them with management, and there is some corrective action in place for those couple of comments. We also have three new accounting standards. Again, the page from the note disclosures is in your presentation handout. We have three new accounting standards that will be required to be implemented over the next three years. GASB 84, which is on fiduciary activities, GASB 87 on leases, and GASB 88 on debt disclosure. So I refer to this as the audit employment section of the audit report. We've got some new accounting standards. They keep coming, and we'll have to work through those to get those implemented and reflected in your audited financial statements. I went through that very quickly. I was told they had to be done in 45 minutes or less, so.
Well, well done.
I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions? No, looks like everything's in order and fiscally sound and healthy, and we appreciate your auditing that.
Thank you, and I appreciate, again, I appreciate all the help. We enjoy coming here and working with the city.
Excellent. Thanks, Aaron. Appreciate it. See you next year.
All right.
Awesome. All right, that's the only presentation we have this evening, I believe. So the next item of business would be call to audience, and that would be your opportunity if you're here in the audience and want to come up and address council on anything that's not on the agenda, because we'll get to that portion when we get to the agenda, that portion of the agenda. Come on up, give us your name, and three minutes is yours.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Sheri A. Wells, and my elf. Did you know that gift wrap is recyclable? Recyclable? And boxes, too. Got a couple comments about boxes. Boxes, pretty much with the exception of one little experiment that apparently didn't work, are supposed to be broken down, flattened, and put in your bins. Now that we have these huge rolling bins, you don't have to dismantle the boxes as much. But Monday, I saw a neighbor who had a bunch of boxes piled up and separated next to the recycle bin, but they weren't taken by the garbage, by the recyclable people because it weren't, they were not in the bin and dismantled. They wound up in the garbage truck. And as far as your recycled, recycle bin, food is not. I read in the paper that SACRA is concerned about the amount of food in our recycle bins. I think one of the things that could remove some of that is if people closed the recycle bin lid. That includes a neighbor on my block and includes the neighboring business kitty corner across the street. If they closed the lids, I think people would, walking by, would not drop garbage in where the recycle bin needs to be. My next-door neighbor, when he lets me put my recycling in his bin because I don't collect enough, and he doesn't quite fill it up. They really want them filled up so they don't have to make so many stops. And I saw that someone had tossed a pizza box inside his recycle bin, so I took out the messy, icky liner and put the okay box back in. Some people don't know what goes in and what doesn't go in. The city hall has a sheet of paper for those who are not on the Internet, and for those who are on the Internet, that's the www.sacra, South Oakland County Resource Recycling, Resource.
Recovery.
Recovery. I had that earlier today.
Yeah.
And that's where you can find out what goes in, what doesn't go in, what you do with hazardous wastes. You can take them in. If you get a nice block club going, maybe one person can make a trip once a month with these computer things. And Jordan is going to have someone from the city call me about what you do for the special Saturday mornings. I just go to SACRA with my stuff and neighbors' stuff. Plastic bags go to SACRA. They don't go in your bin. Styrofoam doesn't go in your bin, but packaging peanuts, Pat Mail will take them. They won't pay you, but you don't have to pay them to take them, and they are delighted to reuse them. So have a good New Year.
Thank you. Thank you to your elf as well.
Yes.
All right.
Who else would like to address council this evening? Pardon my sniffles and cold this evening, but.
Hi, my name's Julia Music. I live at 436 Silman. First to Sheri, I want to say that we haven't put it out there yet, but Ferndale Pride is going to be collecting unused wrapping paper this year for something we have up our sleeves for next year. So just if people want to give their unused wrapping paper, I often see it in recycling bins, completely new rolls that people decide they don't want to hold on to. Well, we have a storage unit now, so we can hold on to lots of stuff, and we'll use that for a good event next year. Couple of things I want to say about the Item B on the consent agenda. Is that allowed right now?
Actually, we're going to, when we get to the consent agenda item, then you, if that's okay, yeah.
Okay.
Because it's on the agenda.
Well, save your wrapping paper, folks, because we're going to need it.
Great reminder. And don't go far.
I will pop back up for consent agenda.
We'll be consent next. Thanks, Julia. Anyone else like to address council on anything that's not on the agenda, because we will give you an opportunity to speak when we get there? Anyone else? All right. Then we will close call to audience, and now we will move on to the consent agenda, and I will read the consent agenda items now. Item A is the approval of the extension of the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission and Ordinance Number 1221, amending Chapter 2 Administration, Article 8 Environmental Sustainability Commission of the City of Ferndale. Item B is the approval of Ordinance 1222, amending Chapter 5 Animals and Fowl, Article 1, to add Section 5 through 9 wild or exotic animals, as submitted by the city manager. Item D, C, excuse me, approval of the proposal for economic incentive consulting services for the DOT from PM Environmental in the amount of $13,800 from the account number as noted. Item D is the approval of the Colasanti Construction Management Addendum, as submitted by our Assistant City Manager. Item E is the approval of the Master Services Agreement with Rocket Fiber for the DOT, with fees subject to payment from the account so noted. Item F is the approval of renewing membership with the Traffic Improvement Association in the amount of $6,200 and charged to the expense, major streets, memberships, and dues account as noted. Item G is the approval of the resolution and permit application allowing the city to work on Woodward Avenue and Eight Mile Road in 2019, as submitted by DPW. Item H is the approval of the 2019 meeting dates, as submitted by our city clerk. Item I is the approval of the resolution of condolence to the family of Jackie Coivu. Item J is the approval of the agreement with Muller Systems LLC at 10210 Statesville Boulevard in Cleveland, North Carolina, to provide service and maintenance of our fixed network advanced metering infrastructure system for $3,000 per year charged to the Water and Sewer Fund contractual services account as noted. Item K is the approval of the purchase of one Furno INX stretcher to meet the current state of Michigan triple K specs, specifically SAE J3027, at a cost of $6,500 plus approximately $800 for shipping and applicable taxes and charged to the account as noted. Item L is the approval of the employee separation agreement, as submitted by our HR director. Item M is the approval of the backfilling of one police patrol position, as submitted by the HR director. Item N is the approval of the backfilling of one firefighter position, also submitted by HR director. Item O is the approval of the bid submitted by Evergreen Skate Park for design build of the Ferndale Skate Park contingent on negotiation and acceptance of an agreement regarding the scope of work for the skate, for the skate park, as submitted by Parks and Rec Director. And finally, Item P is the approval of the bills and payroll, as submitted by the city manager's office and subject to review by the council finance committee. All right, so what is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening, before we have comment? A motion would be in order, or?
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
All right, moved by Polika and supported by Leaks May. Now, Julia, and anyone else from the public that would like to address council on any items on the consent agenda, this would be the appropriate time. Just getting your steps in tonight, Julia.
Hello, folks. Okay, so the item that is on my mind tonight is Item B, the exotic animal amendment. I do agree with the majority of the amendment. I want to make that very clear. There were some things, though, that are concerning to me. One is that it doesn't address specifically adoption events. It does address educational events, and I want to make sure that adoption continues through, sometimes Fido does Ferndale does adoption, but definitely Ferndale Pride has adoption. And sometimes those are requested for exotic animals. Generally, they're not. They're generally for dogs, sometimes cats, but sometimes some exotic birds come into play, too. So I would hope that you guys might change that to word it to continue with adoption. Ferndale Pride takes special care to make sure that those animals are located near areas where they can take a walk and a breather if the event becomes too demanding on them and they become stressed. The other thing I was concerned about is it doesn't specifically address reptile, or sorry, amphibians. It doesn't address reptiles, but there are places within the city that have amphibians on display that are not typically event spaces, but sometimes become event spaces, and those amphibians live there. It would be very stressful for those amphibians to have to move out of the facility to become an event space for that evening and then move back in. So I don't think those animals were possibly considered. The other thing that came up, and this is just from my reading online, and maybe it's not true, that this ordinance looked to be amended because of one specific event that chose to ask for pig racing at their event, which I think is very inappropriate as a request to the city. However, this event has also violated so many different things that we have now faced many rules, many more standards that are much higher than we started our events with. These were things that we were doing anyway, at least at Ferndale Pride. I know DIY and the art festivals and many other festivals were sticking to a very high standard, but now one event has come in and done things that have damaged property, have asked for things like pig racing, which is very outside of the Ferndale norm, and because of that, other events are facing having to go through a lot of hoops, a lot more fees, a lot more meetings, and now also possibly not having things like pet adoption that would be a bonus to pets and to the people of Ferndale because of this specific event. So I'm asking city councils to really consider addressing this one particular event rather than enacting more and more rules and legislations against other events.
So on that point, it was, I certainly agree with you. It was not our intent to ban adoptions or pets, even if those pets are in a place that are occasionally an event. So I want to, I'm going to turn to our city attorney to ask for your opinion. That's how it read to me that those were exempt, but if.
It says educational events. That's why I wasn't sure if adoption is considered educational.
If I could, through the chair.
Yes, thank you.
Your honor, the, this particular matter was referred to the ordinance committee for study and consideration as to whether it should recommend an ordinance that would address this particular subject, and the subject really is wild. this particular subject, and the subject really is wild or exotic animals, and not just those animals, but the issue of displays or performances involving those particular animals. It certainly exempts in this draft the, any type of domesticated animal from the subject of this regulation, and it would provide that the wild or exotic animals that are defined are not allowed to be within the city in a display or performance. So those are defined terms under the draft ordinance, which would be precluded, and those would, in the drafting, contemplated those types of utilization of those wild animals in a stressful manner of a performance or some type of entertainment. The issue raised relative to an adoption of one of the wild animals really wasn't contemplated. It doesn't appear that if they were just brought in, it doesn't, I don't believe it would fit in the category, under the defined term of display or performance as drafted in the text. As it relates to other categories of wild animals that are not articulated, the list certainly could be amended at any time to add other categories of wild animals. There was an attempt to make it a broad list of such animals, but there could be categories that were inadvertently omitted.
So there could be a cat...
Oh, go ahead.
So there could be a category regarding the adoption of animals?
Well, adoption of animals in general isn't regulated by this at all. The issue relative to amphibians, I don't believe, is clearly defined as an exotic or wild animal, and that could be amended to add that type of reference, should council wish to do that.
Reference as an exclusion.
As a type of wild or exotic animal that would be subject to not being displayed or engaging in a performance with such animal within the city.
But that would be more constructive than it is currently. So they're not currently identified as such. So they're not as part of this.
Right, and that was, I think, the reverse of my intent, because there are amphibians on display at a local vendor. There's also exotic fish in the city at some of the nail salons.
That's not included in the...
Right. That's not at all included.
And for clarification...
Certainly in our intent.
For clarification, Councilwoman Leaks May and myself sit on the ordinance committee, and through the conversations over the last year we've had on this, I believe, and it's going back a ways, but I believe we left those off the list because we didn't want to consider those. As you notice with the list, we talk about canine and feline, but we have the exception of cats and dogs, because we don't want a tiger or a lion, you know, being, you know, displayed and within the city.
Okay.
So to clarify, though, just to make sure we're all on the same page as it relates to adoption. Adoption isn't discussed in here, so therefore they could, adoption events could be held, correct?
That's right. That's right. That particular type of use is not addressed.
I think the only other question people brought up at large was pony riding at different events. We've decided at Ferndale Pride we are going to bring in unicorns, which are ponies with, that are actual unicorns for the children, but, you know, we modify them to look like unicorns. We've decided not to do that, but other events do bring in ponies and horses.
If I could address that.
Can you just bring up that as well?
That is included in the definition of a domestic animal, so it would not be characterized as a wild or exotic animal.
Full grown horses as well.
Horses and ponies.
It's defined as any animal commonly kept as companion animals or livestock, including dogs, cats, rabbits, horses, ponies, sheep, goats, poultry, fowl, or cattle. That's the definition.
Okay, but not pigs?
Right.
Not pigs.
Still checking, because there's a lot, a lot of discussion about this. I want to make sure that we got it covered.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. They do. I just don't want to see them racing and...
Which you can have as a pet. You just can't race them at an event. That's the intent here. That's all we're really trying to do. I know it got kind of complicated, but...
It did, and there was a lot of misconceptions on the Internet, and I wanted to make sure that it was clarified, because I obviously don't want to see, you know, chimpanzees brought in for people's entertainment, but I want to make sure that my son can go to an educational event and learn about snakes and reptiles and things like that as well.
Us, too.
I appreciate all the major clarifications. We may be racing drag queens, though, at Ferndale Pride next year, so...
They do not fall in the ordinance.
I got you.
Through the chair.
They may be wild, but I don't think they're...
If council's focused, if one of the, one of the issues of particular concern of council is as it relates to pigs, that could be more clearly articulated, if you wish that section to apply, because that would be normally viewed as livestock.
Do we have residents that have?
Well, again, though, if it's in their home, we don't...
It's not in the home.
We don't bother with the homes.
No, we're not talking, again, we're not talking about pets. You can have a pig as a pet. You can't race pigs at an event, so if this ordinance doesn't include that, it should be amended to do so.
Well, it could be amended to do so.
Okay, right. That is one of the, it wasn't the only instance, I will say, Julia. We've had three times in the last two years that event promoters have asked to do entertainment with animals, and technically, although they have fortunately each backed off of that when we approached them and told them that that's really not an appropriate part of the values of this community, I'm not sure they had to. You know, we don't have anything on our books that says you can't do that, and so this just sort of firms that up so that we can now go, and so event promoters in advance will know that those sort of activities are not appropriate in Ferndale, and they'll have that clarification. But if it's not clear, and certainly pigs was one of the three episodes that were involved, then they, then they need to be, because we don't, we just don't want to do that. That's just not appropriate use of those animals here.
Okay, thank you.
So Dan, could you suggest...
Well, I would suggest adding that to the list, perhaps as a new number 19, that's listed in the wild or exotic animals list at the bottom.
We should, it should. I'm sorry, I didn't catch that, but...
I have sharks as a number 19, so I think this would be 20.
Oh, you're right, yeah. It would be 20.
So that would actually amend that ordinance, and so council, Mayor Proton Polica, is that a friendly amendment?
Absolutely.
I support it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Julia.
Thank you.
Anyone else, anyone else would like to address council on this item or any item on the consent agenda? Counsel, any comments or questions on the consent agenda? I guess I would just reiterate, our intent, so thank you, Julia, for clarifying that. I know there was some confusion. I saw some of that online as well, but certainly the intent of this was simply to avoid the grotesque abuse of these animals who really belong in their own natural habitat, outside of educational and other kinds of activities. And I think that Ferndale is the kind of community that values that sort of respect for animals, and so I think this is an appropriate way to try to address really the egregious examples, and I think, I believe that Dan and the ordinance committee did a, did a fine job of sort of carving those exceptions, even if it's a little legally easy and confusing. But I hope people will spread the word that pets are okay, educational instances are okay, adoptions are okay. So I appreciate the work that's gone into this. It's actually been quite a bit of work to make sure that we have this on our books, so thank you. All right, if there's no further discussion, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Polica?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Excuse me, moving on to the regular agenda. Oh, yes, yes. I'm sorry. Councilwoman Leaks May reminded me, we did have a resolution of condolences on the consent agenda, and I would like to read that. Many of you know of Jackie Koivu, who was a longtime, very active member of our community, and she recently made her transition last month, and I would like to read this, if you don't mind. So at a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Ferndale, held in the council chambers on the 17th day of December 2018, Mayor David Coulter, on behalf of the Ferndale City Council, extends its condolences to the family of Jackie Koivu. Jackie was a Ferndale volunteer and community activist, involved in the public schools, gay rights, women's rights, mental health advocacy, cancer awareness, and local elections, among others. She walked the Susan G. Komen Three Day and chaired the Ferndale chapter of Relay for Life. Volunteering was a way of life for Jackie, and she was always involved in her church, children's schools, community events, and with friends and family. She also served in the Army and served this community with humor, kindness, honor, and dedication. Jackie was a credit to her family and this city, and was highly regarded by the Ferndale community, and it is with deep sorrow that we mourn her loss. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me to do that. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to the regular agenda now. Item A is the consideration of the appointment of Carissa Green to the Planning Commission for a term ending December 31, 2020. Is Carissa here by chance?
Wasn't able to make it tonight.
Okay, all right. Who wants to introduce that item?
Dan's not here, but I personally know Carissa.
Please, yes, that'd be great. Thank you.
Carissa is well-known in the urban planning network, currently works for ULI Michigan. It works with a lot of urban planners and helps Detroit as well as other development projects throughout the region, and so I think her perspective is something that we need. I don't even think it's on.
There we go. Sorry. Thank you for pointing that out. Carissa and I go, Chris and I know each other from my professional work. She works on the ULI Michigan and currently does, supports the development network in cities throughout the region, and her perspective, I think, will be really important on the planning commission. She's definitely a dedicated urban planner.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Oh, sorry. I move to confirm the appointment of Carissa Green to the Planning Commission for a term ending December 31, 2020.
Support. Moved by Piana and supported by Polica. Now, any discussion from anyone in the audience or council on this item?
I was just going to say, welcome, you brave, brave woman. It's a, it's a important committee, and you do a lot of important work. Welcome.
We have a hard-working planning commission.
Very hard-working.
And especially with the development going on in town. And so having people like her in the community with the expertise and the development experience that she has is wonderful, and Councilwoman, thank you for helping bring her forward. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Polica?
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That appointment is adopted. Item B is another appointment, consideration of appointments to the Ferndale Arts and Culture Commission for a term ending December 31, 2019. That's another Dan liaison one, isn't it?
Yeah.
So I will read that one. The mayor is the appointing authority for the arts and culture with the approval of council, and there, we have applications from Elizabeth Lieb, Amy Whip, and Matt Eaton to join our Ferndale Arts and Culture Commission. The, their applications are in your package. Are any of those applicants here this evening? A little shy this evening. All right. But you have their applications. They are interested and qualified, and we appreciate, that's, that's become a very active and engaged committee. Three more good folks to join it, so...
Actually, I don't think they're here tonight, because they are meeting tonight. They always meet on the third Monday of the month.
I don't spite it.
We're the ones that are out of sync.
That could be, all right.
But I would like to move that we confirm the appointments of Elizabeth Lieb, Amy Whip, and Matt Eaton to the Ferndale Arts Cultural Commission for a term ending December 31, 2019.
Support.
Moved by Polica and supported by Leaks May. Any discussion? Further discussion? All right, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Proton Polica?
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. Those appointments are adopted. Moving on now to item C, is the approval of the purchase of two dump trucks from Wolverine Truck, outfitted by Knapp Hyde, for $275,886, and that the expense be charged to the General Fund Public Service Department vehicle purchase account, as submitted by our DPW administrative manager. And speaking of which, are you going to just sort of briefly introduce that item for us?
It's not that exciting. Just keeping up with our...
I thought dump trucks got you guys excited.
No.
All of them, all of them, really. Got a pretty long lead time on them, but we're going to get these ordered this year. Both these vehicles have been plugged in and budgeted to get replacement. 1252 was actually slated last fiscal year to begin the replacement process on that, but we just, you know, kind of moved it over a year, and 1254 was scheduled to begin its replacement this year, so we would like to get those trucks on order. You're looking at a 12, 14-month lead time from when we order to when we actually receive the trucks. This is pretty similar to the other trucks that we have in service. We can't use these all four seasons. You can't put a salter on those. They're not going to come with a salter bed, conveyor system bed, but we can get spreaders that we can attach to the back, so we can still use them in the winter and so on. 1252, we can keep that one in service, still, still got some life left on her, so we're going to keep that one in service until we receive its replacement. 1254 is currently not in service. It kind of sits along the fence. Most of that's due to a lot of rust on the cab, so the only way you're getting in and out and keeping your doors shut is with the block of wood in between the cab and the box of the bed, so that one really doesn't get out of the yard too much, so we're racking up a nice little collection of auction-type material. Not sure who would want to buy it, but hopefully somewhere else there can find a good home for it and get what's left out of her, and that's really about it. Possibly finance with KS State Bank. Most of the interest rates we're looking at are about the same, right around that 4.2% over five years. We do come in about six grand under budget for the, between the two of the vehicles, so there's a nice little cost savings right there. But other than that, that's about it, just two, two dump trucks. Probably get white ones. I don't know. Yellow, we'll see what they got, but...
As long as they have the F on them, we'll be happy.
Yeah, they'll have the F on them. We'll put the DPW yellow on there, too, so...
That's why we love you, Dan.
Question, and it might be for Cheryl, because, and I, my apologies, I don't sit on their capital improvement plan, but is this part of the DPW capital improvement plan, these vehicles? And what is the balance of that account, the vehicle account? Is that too, is that too random a question? Okay, that's fine. All right. But it's part of, but the first, the first question really gets it, because it's, this is scheduled as part of the...
Dan said one of the trucks was scheduled last fiscal year, and it didn't happen, and the other, the other truck was scheduled for this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Questions or a motion would be in order.
I, I just have one comment before the motion. I just want to point out 1252 is a 20-year-old truck, and that 1254 is a 21-year-old truck, so thank you for, DPW, for making them last 20 years.
I hate it.
And so we send them on to their, their afterlife. With that, I move to approve the purchase of two dump trucks from Wolverine Truck, outfitted by Knapp Hyde, for $270,886, and that the expense be charged to General Fund Public Service Department vehicle purchase, account number as stated.
Support, and make sure these last 20 years.
Do our best. Based on some stuff, we could do every 10, but we'll make do.
All right. Other questions or comments?
We have a ceremony.
No, we're having...
It's good, it's all good.
All right. All right, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Proton Polica?
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Councilwoman Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on to regular agenda, item D is the consideration of the Geary Park Phase 1 Master Concept Plan and the submission to MDNR and the Geary Park Phase 1 Park Improvement Budget. Arena, you're going to introduce that item, right?
Yes. Cool.
All right, well, it's time to put our grant dollars to work. So as you know, we received a 2017 MDNR Trust Fund grant for improvements at Geary that included a walking path, water fountain, outdoor fitness equipment, and other general amenities like benches, trash, recycle bins, et cetera. So... So from that grant, it kicked off our planning efforts for Geary Park and we developed a mass, a draft master concept plan for Geary. But in order to move forward with our grant, we decided to pull out Phase One of that master concept plan, which we are asking for approval for today along with the budget. And Phase One, everything in Phase One is part of the grant. So all of the grant improvements are in that phase. In order to come to this point, we, we had community meetings where we actually engaged the community in the design process of Geary Park. We had a community design meeting, which each resident was able to give input and actually do an exercise to create their own design of Geary Park, of what they wanted to see in a group setting, similar to what we did for Wilson Park. We also had an open house to present different concept options that could be included to Geary in, in the park based on what was, what came out of the design process. And then one great recommendation we actually got from one of the community members, it was supported by the rest of the group, was we should engage the high schoolers and the middle schoolers in the process to see what they want in the park. And so we did that. So we had a teen focus group that we put together through the Boys and Girls Club and we had over 20 students there and got a lot of great feedback and they went through a similar exercise where they designed the park how they wanted to see it. And so that brings us to the design we're gonna present today. And what we're requesting again is approval of Phase One of the master concept plan so we can move forward with our MDNR grant items as well as the budget for Phase One. And if we are under budget, we're, we're gonna, we're asking that we also include the basketball court in the Phase One instead of Phase Two. So I'm gonna turn it over to Megan with Hamilton Anderson to just go through the actual concept for Phase One.
Excellent. Welcome, Megan.
Good evening. So as Lorena said, Phase One is just a small portion of the overall master plan. So some of the parts and pieces might seem a little strange when you don't have the overall picture, but we've done our best to make them seem seamless.
Before you go further, I think just to clarify, the reason the full master plan isn't there yet is because we are waiting for the skate park design build to, to come back with some recommendations. So it is important to note that Phase One has no bearing on whether or not the skate park goes in there or not. So they've, that's why you see just this one piece, because we didn't feel it was appropriate to approve two different models of a master plan. So that's just a little bit of history of why we're just doing that Phase One, but it doesn't have any bearing. Phase One is what it is with or without a skate park being put in that park.
Thank you.
Yep.
So the, the main pieces of work in the plan are, as Lorena mentioned, just to reiterate, six feet and eight-foot wide asphalt walking paths, six-foot connecting from Lewiston down to Earl along the west side of the park, and then along Earl Boulevard to the south, and then an eight-foot cross-access path coming up between the existing T-ball fields and connecting right now to the pad at the inline skating rink, and then via the existing path there back to Lewiston. That's the main bulk of work, but then there's also over here by the existing parking lot along Central, a fitness area. This is the area where we envision the basketball court in the future, so that felt like a, a good synergy between those two activities. And then we have throughout the park benches, litter and recycling receptacles, pet waste bag dispensers. There is a new drinking fountain going in here by the parking lot that'll have a bottle filler and a pet fountain in addition to the ADA fixtures. And then I think that about covers it as well as some tree removal and tree planting that goes along with that, including particularly back here and along the street, a number of new trees. And just so you can see, oh, here's the ad alternate showing the location of the basketball court. And that just essentially means that when we get the bids, if they come in under budget, we can add the basketball court to the scope of work of the contractor without having to pay any additional cost markups through a change order. And then so you can see how it fits into the master plan, of course, understanding that you're not approving that tonight. You can see that, that along that path that we're putting in in the future, we see the potential for a garden walk up here. So that's what this path is connecting along as well as the Heroes Garden. Then that cross-axial path connecting to where we envision the future playground to be located. And then over to the east, the community gathering area. And once the playground is relocated, there's an opportunity here for a little bit more of a shaded secluded kind of walking area, meditative area, as well as up here where the existing toddler playground is, a picnic area, which is where, in our master planning process, is kind of where we envision the skate park going. So there would be opportunities to connect it with a community gathering area and plaza. And some illustrative imagery telling you about that master plan and some of the elements we see fitting into it. The fitness area equipment we're looking at is, is along these lines. Some, some resistance, like calisthenics, some functional fitness elements that Parks is working on selecting now and the paths being asphalt, much like what you have at Harding now.
Yeah.
And, do you have the budget? Or do you? I don't know. Yeah. So that's the Phase One.
Is Phase One this summer?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we plan to actually start some of the, in the construction documents, we put the bids out, it would be for Wanda and Geary, so we can have some cost savings. So hopefully it'd be one contractor doing both to decrease on mobilization and, and all those costs, so we can save as much as we can by doing as, much as we can in the beginning at the same time.
Thank you. So before I ask council, is there anyone from the public that's here that wants to talk, that would like to address council about the master plan for Geary Park? Yeah, please come on up.
I have so much.
Thank you. The only thing that was addressed to me by Transgender Michigan, they hold their transgender pride festival in the park, is that they would like to see a large grill go in.
Grill, did you say?
Grill.
Yeah.
In the beginning, it was about 15 of us around a picnic table and the small grill was really great, but now we have about 200 people show up, so we're not able to grill food in a timely manner. So if a larger grill could be put in, it would just be a benefit to the entire community. And of course, if there's no funding through the grants, possibly filing for a grant with Ferndale Community Foundation so we could fulfill that request so that we can have bigger and better parties at Geary Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Great idea.
Good evening.
Good evening. Bruce Jarvie, 2427 Highland. I'm just slightly bothered by the basketball court. And to be honest, this, this park is walking distance from my house, as is the lower elementary school over, on the border between Ferndale and Pleasant Ridge. They used to have a half basketball court and it was removed by public safety. And I'm just concerned about the same type of incidences, again, occurring at the new basketball court.
Mm-hmm.
But I just wanted to remind City Council the removal of that other court sometime in the last dozen years.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I remember. Thank you. No, appreciate it. Anyone else? All right. Counsel.
I have a question for Lorena.
Yeah.
The installation of a basketball court, how did that come about? Was it community input? What was the, the background, the reasoning for placing a basketball court at, in that, that location?
So the basketball court did come about from the community 100% during a design meeting. I want to say maybe four out of five?
Four out of six.
Four out of six of the designs that the community came up with included a basketball court. We've been hearing a lot of suggestions from the community to, to put basketball courts back into the parks. And in addition, we had our teen focus group and that was the number one thing next to swings, which was surprising. But that every, all 21 other students wanted to see at Geary Park was the basketball court. We did evaluate different locations for the basketball court within the park, and this seemed to be the one that best suited the park and the neighbors. Originally, I believe, back in the day, it was where, right next to the inline skating rink, but we did, residents on both sides or within that area were at the meeting and it was very clear they didn't want the basketball court to go there. And so we decided the basketball court to go along this side off of Central and Earl, right off of the parking lot, which would make it easier for parking, as well as access to the basketball court and more visible.
Oh, we've also designed the court, if you squint at that picture, you can see, so that it's actually four half courts or two short courts running east-west. And-
They're that way?
Yeah. I don't know if I can zoom.
Yeah, no, I, now that you mention it, you can see it.
Yeah. And then a full-size court north-south and all of those, so there'd be six hoops total and they'd all have removable rims. So the thinking was that, you know, it's, it's more of the dolls that are gonna be causing a lot of issues and have been historically, from what we understand in Ferndale. So if it becomes an issue, they can take down the full-court hoops to try to reduce the competitiveness of the play and the people it might be attracting, but still provide opportunities for kids to play their more informal games.
We've used the removable hoops at the Kula location, haven't we? Or is it, yeah?
Throughout, actually throughout the city. And I do understand the, the incident that you're referring to, sir, was probably about 10 years ago, 12 years? I don't even know if you were on council yet.
I think so.
Yeah, I think it was before you were on council. And there was an incident that happened that involved a weapon at one of the basketball courts, and I think the city at the time overreacted and removed all the, the rims from every park. And shortly thereafter, the city received a grant from the Community Foundation for removable hoops and, and the rec department was going around, but I think that just kind of the staff got reduced, the, you know, the replacements of all that just kind of went away. And so I think a lot of our carts, courts just went unused because no one was putting up the removable rims.
And we, we definitely heard the concern about the basketball courts and we have been working with police as well as DPW before we even considered to put a basketball court back at Geary on how we would handle it and, and look at previous reports of incidents where there haven't been many incidents at all on average in the last 10, 12 years, or as far back as we could look in the police system.
Yeah.
How many par, how many basketball courts do we have total in our park system?
Two and a half, if you include Kula.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have two half courts at Harding and then we have one full court at Wanda and then the three, the one-quarter court at, at Kula.
Through the chair. I know that safety is a concern and we've been addressing safety in our parks for the last couple of years. One thing that is different from a decade ago is that we now have park rangers during the summer months, and I was wondering how that can relate to helping monitor activity in the parks. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so we've been in talks with DPW about the park rangers and they've been doing a really great job this last summer. We will continue to look how we can incorporate them and, and more, being more visible out in the parks. I think it's just getting the right staff to, to be able to, to handle that. But definitely we'll be using the park rangers. They, right along with all of the DPW staff as they, as they go through the parks and we'll be having also be more mobile in the summer as well, so our staff can go by and do more, more site visits also.
And additional question on safety, I think all of our restrooms still have the wireless locks, right? So that's gonna be still continuing, because crime and, or vandalism in our restrooms was a higher incident of crime in our parks than issues around the basketball court. So that still will be in place?
Yes, and we're actually looking to upgrade our systems.
Okay.
I know it's not part of the master plan, but Heroes Gardens, I know there's been discussions about maintenance of that and ongoing, and where, where, where are we with that?
And watering.
So we are actually working together with the Heroes Garden. The city will take over the Heroes Garden, working along with the Friends of the Heroes Garden to, to manage it, but as far as the maintenance, it'll be handled by DPW.
What is, what-
Which is new, it's new. We haven't really done that before.
Right.
So it just makes more sense for us to navigate that.
Yeah.
It's fine. It's, once they maintain it, it's not that, it's not, it's not a burden.
What, what-
No, talking to Carlos and his team, it's really not a burden once they're able to manage that and it's appropriate for us to do. It's part of the park.
We'll still get the assistance from the volunteers to maintain it.
They're still, they're very involved, but.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, okay, thank you.
And planting flowers. They would do plantings, right? Whereas we would maintain the grass and debris and, yeah.
Yeah, it looks good.
Other comments or questions?
I just wanted to thank Lorena and her team for, I, I know how much work you guys have been putting into this plan and I appreciate you involving the community because to me, this is kind of what an inclusive park looks like. It has something for everyone and I just, I can really appreciate that, so.
Thanks.
Kudos to you and the community members and your team.
Thank you.
A motion would be in order. What is the motion? Okay. We have two motions here.
I move that the City Council approves the Geary Park Phase One Master Concept Plan and submission of the bid construction documents to MDNR as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Director.
Support.
All right. It's been moved and supported. Further discussion? Comments? Marnie, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee Smye?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Polica?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you.
I also move that the City Council approve the Geary Park Phase One Park Improvement Budget being funded by the Park Bond account listed in the amount of $250,000, of which $81,700 is the rest of it.
Uh, sorry?
Will be reimbursed through the, through an MD, through a MDNR grant and completion of Phase, and completion of Phase One of the Geary Park Improvement Project as recommended by the Parks and Rec Director.
Also support.
All right. Further comments or discussion on that? All right. Marnie, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee Smye?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Polica?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thanks, Lorena.
Thank you.
Our final regular agenda item this evening is the consideration of the DOT bid package one award recommendations, and Joe is gonna do that one.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I am here to present the first of two bid award packages related to construction activities for the DOT. Over the past several months, we've worked with the construction manager, Colasanti Construction, and our design team at WGIP, Go Shaver and Papris to separate the bids in a way that would enable some preliminary site preparation to get us going in January. And that's essentially the, the work that's being approved tonight. So I'm happy to report that the, the bid tabulation came back and the bids that we are recommending came in at $631,000 below the budget that we had originally planned, which is a great indicator of the first bid pack. Very happy about that. All work has been awarded locally to companies within the Metro Detroit region. And so tonight, this is the first approval for a bid award package for the services listed in the, in the cover letter. The second bid is being released this week and that work is for the superstructure, which is the majority of the project, and that, those bids will be returned on January 19th. We will have a recommendation for awards at the following council meeting in January.
All right. Any questions of Joe? Or a motion?
I had a, I had a question about where you've recommended the lowest-cost bid, but there's a pretty significant difference in some of the bids, like by $30,000. Can you just talk a little bit about why such a big difference?
Yeah, we, we went through the tabulation with our construction manager. The biggest impact was the Earth Retention Package and that is savings around engineering. We hired a firm that is very experienced that presented a, a design that was different than the bid- We hired a firm that is very experienced that presented a design that was different than the bid spec, that was an improvement on the bid spec, and resulted in efficiency. A significant inefficiency. In terms of landscaping, each of the bidders was qualified, and the cost of work essentially was, we were looking for groupings, and the recommendations are just below those groupings. So they were pretty consistent, but we're pretty happy with these results.
If I may, through the chair?
Yes.
We always, obviously, we always select contractors that are qualified. But some contractors are qualified, but their reputation might not be the best. Their quality of work might not be the best. How do we identify those issues? Do we communicate with other communities, other cities that have worked with these contractors to see their the happiness of their work that was done?
Yeah, yeah, actually, following the review of all the bid awards that came in, it's not the awards, all the actual bits that came in, our construction manager, Colasanti, does just that. They actually do a post-exit interview. They test their assumptions, make sure that they didn't screw up their pricing, because we're going to lock them into that as soon as I bring it here, so they can't deviate from that pricing. So all this pricing is locked in. And if they make a mistake, they have to eat that cost. And then we also do reference checks on them. And that, those reference checks for the community work was done for each of these companies prior to the recommendation.
Are those reference checks or references that they supply or that we try to research? Because sometimes they'll give you the references of the people that they know are going to give the greatest, you know, response.
Yeah, they do provide a list of reference checks. But one of the reasons we went with Colasanti is because of their reputation and their history of experience. They're one of the oldest companies in the metro area, and they're the predominant cast-and-place concrete contractor and construction manager in the area. And I say area as in the Midwest. So their reputation precedes them.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
I would close on that. I did want to just use this opportunity to let the community know about some next steps. So this site preparation work that's being approved is actually going to enable us to begin to fence the site. Our target date is January 28th. So as of January 28th, that would remove the West Troy lot, which is Lot 6, this project site, offline. And that would also take up a piece of West Troy in front of it to make sure that we incorporate all of construction activities on the site and not outside of the site. We have held one business meeting already to kind of provide some information about the project. In concert with Colasanti Construction Manager, we have a residential meeting and another business meeting followed, are already scheduled and invitations are already sent within the first two weeks of January. So we will make sure that updates are prominent, they're transparent, and we will be aggressive about getting them out there. In addition, there's a newsletter just about the project itself being mailed to the entire community that is set to go out this week. And then we'll be sending out more letters and postcards to those affected in the area.
Mark your calendar. A motion would be in order.
I move to approve the bid award recommendations and general conditions fees in the amount of $2,912,933 to be paid from the auto parking fund.
I support.
Moved by Polika, supported by Piana. Now, any other discussion, comments, questions? Here we go. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
No turning back.
Councilmember Leesmay?
Yes.
Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Proton Polika?
Yes.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Holter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. All right. That brings us to call to council. Chief Palzola, anything for the good of the community? Anything else from DPW this evening? Fire? Anything from the fire department this evening? Nothing. Jordan, anything from community and economic development? No. How about from finance? No. Communications and community engagement. Kara says, "I'll take your time."
Yeah, Joe mentioned the newsletter. And so I just wanted to give a really quick update and say that you should be looking for this lovely colorful newsletter in your mailboxes shortly. This is actually the first newsletter done by Lindsay, the communications coordinator, who is now taking over the newsletters. That was a big applause for me, too. So this is the...
Wait, we should clap when it arrives in the mailbox.
It's arriving in the mailbox, Mayor. No questions on that one. That problem is fixed. But basically, this is your kind of fourth quarter newsletter of the year, and this one is all about the DOT. Project updates, information about temporary parking services, walkability, lot locations, anything you might need to know. So, and then plenty of links back to our website so people can come back and ask questions if they have them. But we just wanted to give a quick update about that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Dan, anything from HR this evening? All right. And Lorena, anything else from Recreation? No? Okay. Joe, anything from Assistant City Manager's office?
Already dropped the mic. I'm done.
Marnie, anything from the City Clerk's office?
No, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Hi. April?
Just a friendly reminder that our offices will have an adjustment in schedule over the next couple of weeks due to the holiday. So City Hall will be closed on Monday, December 24th and the 25th. And then we'll close again on the 31st of December and the 1st of January. So just the normal closures, but we'll be open on the other days. And then I just wanted to say a big shout out to Joe for getting us as far as we have with the DOT. It's a big deal tonight, so I know it'll be a bigger deal next month, but a lot of hard work. Thank you for all of that. So thank you. That's all I have.
Great. Dan?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
All right. Councilwoman Leesmay?
Nothing tonight.
Mayor Proton Polika?
I would just like to wish all of you a wonderful holiday and a happy, joyous New Year, as well as the residents and staff. And that's about it.
Excellent. Thank you. Got to one, Piana?
Yeah, I had this amazing opportunity through my role as board president of the Michigan Municipal League, in which I am the board president for one year, representing cities across the state. Started in September and goes to September 2019. But a surprise invitation to join MML's CEO in Wuhan, China, to do placemaking week with the United Nations Habitat and Project for Public Spaces, which is a global nonprofit that helps cities figure out how to create more spaces for people to convene. And so went to China for 3.5 days, a whirlwind trip, and really got exposed to some global thinking about how cities are redesigning their spaces to A, be resilient to climate change, B, how to create more lovable spaces, not just livable. And how does that create opportunity and connect people to opportunity when you create spaces that are lovable? And so that really sort of got me thinking about what is livable and what is lovable in our downtown and across our community, and where are we creating it? One example where I apply this is that our park, Gary Park, right now is livable, but we're about to make it more lovable with all the amenities that are going to go in there, that the community helped decide what we need to be. So really, the opportunity to go was amazing. But my learning and takeaways about how I'm applying it to my role in Ferndale and representing the community is really thinking about the future and how do we create these places where people are like, "Oh, my God, this is amazing. I just want to sit here and drink my coffee for four hours and sit somewhere that is great and interact with my family or friends." And so to me, that was inspiring and seeing how other cities across the world are doing that. And so I'm really just appreciative for that exposure and hope to apply some of these things here with our economic and development and planning team. They love when I bring new ideas to them every other day. So we'll go from there. So happy New Year, happy Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah. Enjoy the holidays. I hope everybody has a relaxing time. Thank you.
May I ask regarding your trip to China? So is their idea of lovable involving like community engagement? Do the community members participate in?
A space can only be lovable because the people help create the lovable-ness. So it has to be oriented to the people. And there's only one path to get there if you're creating it for the people who came up with the ideas. And sometimes the ideas need to be presented in a new way so that lovable can be a vision.
That's awesome. And I think you're a perfectly placed person to go there and share that information. We do that pretty well here, I think. And I'm just fortunate that we have you going on those kinds of excursions to bring back that kind of information and to share the information that we're doing here in Ferndale as well.
It's very rare for an elected official to do that. I do want to say MML paid for this trip. The city did not expend funds to send me to China.
Good asterisk there. Yeah, we don't have that much money in our travel accounts.
I would never do that on municipal dollar.
But that's an awesome opportunity and awesome for the city as well. I also want to say, you know, we passed the, we adopted the audit and heard from the auditors this evening. And although it feels like it's become sort of routine, I just want to give kudos to our finance staff and our city manager and all the department heads who help to do the work that makes that happen. That's a glowing audit. We're very fiscally sound and secure. The residents can be assured you don't have to read the audit to know. And so we should be proud of that. And so Cheryl, and to your team, and to April and everyone who's involved in that, thank you for continuing to keep us on this prudent financial path. And finally, I'd also like to just wish everyone a happy and safe holidays. Be well, and we'll see you in the new year. Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.